Number 11 meeting. Are there any agenda changes for item number one? Okay, public comments for non-agenda items. Joe, are you here for a...
Yeah.
You are.
Is this a good time?
Yes, this is the right time.
I've come with an invitation and a question. We would like, we are presenting the sixth Water Matters event on... We, I'm sorry, Lewis Creek Association and RGH combining forces once again. And we would very much like to have a sponsorship of the Planning Commission with regard to this. The program itself has not yet been solidified, but I can tell you that what I think it's, what we think it's going to be is a question to, or posing a proposition to the citizens in this town with regard to how they would react to costs for preventing, for taking care of stormwater. What we're saying is that there are ways in which we can perceive what could, what would happen with good work with intel, you know, with a program of sorts. And the cost factor to the citizens of the town and surrounding towns is a thing that we're going to present as something to be dealt with. I think that is the direction that this is going in.
Do you have a date?
We have November 7th here at the Town Hall, reserved. And I think it's going to be exciting to do this one. We have Jessica, what's her last name, please?
Luiso.
Luiso. As a keynote speaker. And some, one of the things, just for fun, not fun, but for reality, hands-on kind of thing, is we're hoping to be able to bring in a water table, an actual sand and water situation, so that people can actually manipulate sand to see how the water will flow, what ways it can be directed. So, but the next meeting of the subcommittee, the committee that is working on this, with Marty Illick and Kate Kelly from Lewis Creek Association, will be on Friday this week. So we'll have more information for you. But we wanted to be, wanted to get in here and ask, would you be interested in joining us as a sponsor for this event? Your input is valuable.
You might remember that the Planning Commission has sponsored this event in the past. I don't think it's been every year, but maybe the last couple. And I don't know if it was last year or the year before that we were, one of the speakers was going to be our former town administrator, Joe Colangelo, who, you know, went to work for the town of Shelburne, has since moved on to another position out of state. And that was going to be sort of the topic of his talk, was to explain how Shelburne found itself in a position of being an impaired waterway community and what that has cost the municipality in terms of required remediation efforts and education and so on and so forth. But Joe wasn't able to present. He, I guess he bailed out on that. So we never got to hear that, quite that slice of the conversation. So when Johanna came to the office today and said, you know, "mention this," I thought, I was excited because I thought, well, if we could get someone of Jessica Luiso's caliber to come and talk to us about, you know, what the fiscal ramifications could be, I think it could, it could be an eye-opener.
That's a tightly topic.
She's worked with us before. She works for Mylona McBroom, which is a water, hydrology and watershed sort of consultant group. They do more than that, but that's what we've used them for. She's the engineer who designed our Beecher Brook flood restoration project that's happening next to the town highway garage. So she's an expert in this sort of thing. But she's also the chair of the South Burlington Planning Commission. And South Burlington is also an impaired waterway MS4 community. And so she is, she is really one of the leading experts in the state on, you know, what it means to communities to have impaired stormwater.
So what's involved in sponsoring? Do we have to bake cookies or something?
We're not, we're not expecting, you know, slave labor or anything of that sort. We're, we're, you know, reaching, being able to say that the Planning Commission of Heinsberg is in with, is kind of joining in with this effort would be a good saying to the whole town and for us, frankly speaking. We'd like to have your support. And by that support, I honestly can't tell you, but maybe after Friday I could be more direct about that or more explanatory about.
But you're not looking for money or cookies?
Oh, no, no, no. No cookies, no money. We do our own baking.
It does help these sorts of events to have a town committee sponsoring them if they're going to be here at the town office and take advantage of our equipment and that sort of thing. Our sponsor group, Heinsberg and Lewis Creek Association are not town entities. So the Planning Commission and/or the Planning Zoning Department, you know, joining forces as we've done in the past is helpful in that regard.
Can we wait to decide until the program is solidified?
We could, certainly, absolutely.
Your next meeting is...
You just hit a $50 benefit though, by having you there.
Yeah.
Then it becomes a town thing.
Oh, for the, yes, instead of having to rent the main hall.
So you are saving us $50.
Right.
Yeah.
That is all I can tell you.
Well, last year's pulled a really good crowd, I think.
We would like to reach again the crowd that we had initially, which was some, was well over 90 people from surrounding towns. And we want to do that again. We always include Shelburne and Sherlot and Starkborough, whoever wants to join in with us, is certainly is welcome. And we'd just like everybody there.
But the commission meets again on the 25th, so if you want to...
Hold on.
Decide for sure, then you'll probably have more of a program.
Much more.
Were you going to post it before then or...
Oh, yeah, because, well, first of all, the minutes from that meeting on Friday that will go to RGH.
No, 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 I mean, post on Front Porch Forum. Are you going to start advertising before our next meeting?
Probably not this soon.
Okay, all right.
No, there is an article that will come out in, that will come out, okay, there is one little thing, thanks for thinking ahead of me. We have a letter coming out in the Heinsberg Record that may appear. I don't know when it comes, when, I know its deadline is Thursday. Do you know when publication happens, that following week or is it longer than that?
I don't actually know.
I don't, I don't know.
Probably the end of the month.
Right.
A minute, we were...
We could pull it out.
So you'd like to have...
We'd like to have the sponsorship of the Planning Commission allowed.
But that is due Thursday or tomorrow?
Tomorrow is the, the hand-in for the article.
So you can't say it...
Right.
So does anyone have any objections or questions?
Pardon?
Does anyone have any questions or objections?
I'm not particularly averse to waiting, I guess. Although, you know, I think these efforts historically have been really informative for the community and I don't see, I guess, with deference to you, I don't see any reason in waiting to endorse and support this effort myself. I mean, these have been great forums on an incredibly pertinent issue and I think... So I don't see any reason to wait myself.
James, do you have any, any other questions or are you prefer to...
No, I guess it's just, you know, certainly the topic as a whole certainly seems to make sense and something of interest and something that should be of concern to us. Personally, just before saying, yeah, I think we should endorse it, I prefer to have a little more detail on...
The program.
Yes.
So do we, do we need a motion or are we just, we can...
I think that if the rest of the commission is, you know, sensitive to James's concern and wants to take this up on the 25th, even though it won't be in the record, you know, then no, you don't need a motion. We'll just, I'll just put it back on the agenda, or I'll put it on the agenda for the 25th and you can take care of it then.
Okay.
And that's still a month and a half before, so you'll be able to do plenty of promotion, including the Planning Commission's endorsement if, and, you know, assuming they give it at that point.
Right.
And you'll, you, the program will be a little more fleshed out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm having that for Front Porch Forum, I think will make a, make a difference though, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right then. So let's move ahead to the architectural and streetscape design standards. So, so we have our list and Alex and I talked about a pretty ambitious schedule for working through the, the design standards. And we were thinking, since we've got basically an hour to work through these and we have a bunch of them to work through, that instead of really getting into the weeds in these topics, we're, we're going to be looking at which ones we really want to take a closer look at and maybe get a sense of what direction we'd like to, to go in on some of them so that we can give a little bit of direction to Alex, who can then give us something to look at for two weeks from now? No, a month from now.
Correct.
Yeah. So, so that's a bit of a challenge in an hour, getting through all 11 of these. But let's give it the old college try and see how we, see how we do. Alex, do you have anything to...
Only that, the two pager that I provided lists these 11. I mean, it's not a sacrosanct list. This came from one of your earlier meeting discussions. If we've missed something, we can add it to the list. But what Maggie asked me to do a while back was look at our existing regulations and see to what extent these design standard topics or issues are already addressed and how in the existing regs. The thought being that you've talked about 11 different types of architectural and streetscape design standards. Maybe all 11 of them require additional language or revised language, maybe not. Maybe the current regs adequately address three of them and, and you want to jettison three others because you don't like them anymore and so we're down to a smaller number to actually draft new language on. So I thought this discussion would be a good way to walk through them and get your feedback on which ones you think are adequately addressed in the regs today and which ones you want to see more language on and perhaps which ones you don't care about or, you know, were interesting but don't need to be moved forward on.
So you can pull up maybe the existing, I mean, we all have the, this, I assume, yeah, the potential standards and maybe you can pull up what we have in our existing standards.
Oops.
Yeah, we need to be able to read it.
Right. Yeah, I'm happy to scroll to whatever section you want to take a peek at and happy to walk through it in whatever order you want. Might be easy just to go from, take it from the top. Setbacks is the first one.
There are some that you have indicated there's no language about.
Right.
And others need improvement.
Yep, I'm happy to speak to that as we go through.
I wonder whether it makes sense to look at those ones that don't have any language at all, do they, do they move up on the list?
Perhaps.
I don't know. It seems like that building height issue is a real important one and there's no language or there's, they're neat, we need new language for that.
Yeah, what, what...
Whatever people want to do, go ahead.
Well, you jumped to number six, so we're flexible, we can start there.
Yeah.
What, what did people think of, of that building height relief? This is something that, I think you, Ralph, have brought up a number of times and even showed us in the Vergennes photos, the strong building that has the, it's a three-story building with porches on the first and second stories and then the third story sort of steps back a little bit, doesn't have a porch, I guess that's why. Is this, and you mentioned it in your presentation at the other meeting, when we were talking about the Route 116 Main Street area and how that might be redeveloped.
I have two questions. I think this is the right time to ask it. If not, you can tell me to be quiet. But is that related to number nine also? The multi-story building?
Yes and no. I think that number six, which is the building height relief, is typically in the zoning lexicon, is a way to get taller buildings to blend with smaller buildings a little better and maybe not be as imposing from the street as well. And so I often read about it, not so much in two- or three-story buildings, but in taller buildings like in the urban area of Burlington where the developer says, well, we've got a much larger building than the surrounding buildings, but we're going to, we're going to ameliorate that to some degree by stepping back the higher stories. So it's, it provides a little bit more space and air as you, as you look up and into the sky. So that's what six is really getting at. And number nine is more, to what extent do we want to require multi-story buildings in place of just single-story construction everywhere potentially?
So that's what's sort of leading into my second question. And in that, I was like, do we want to think about, what areas do we want to do this? Are we going to do it in the whole village? That's where I'm, my head's going mixed up.
Right, and I think that's a big part of the discussion, but I think it would be important to know whether the topic in and of itself is something you think is important enough anywhere in the village to pursue. Some of these, we've talked about and after that discussion, you may be thinking, I don't think that's a Heinsberg thing. Let's not even worry about that. And if that's the case, we don't have to talk about where to apply it because we won't apply it at all.
I'm just nervous about required versus encouraged. Now, I didn't before, but I've thought about it more. That, that just make, feel, makes me feel a little unsettled, but, and I'm open to what anybody has to say.
Encouraged, I feel is useless.
I know, I get...
In the regs. But I think you're, I think you're right. With a lot of these ideas, you kind of need to go to microzones because, right, some of these, you definitely want to apply to areas, but then, hmm, the way we have things zoned, you know, you, you don't necessarily want to, you know, require the next redevelopment, you know, south of landmines to build right up to the street. Right? So you gotta, you gotta think about it.
So that's my point.
Well, we could talk about that in relation to number nine and number six.
Right.
So let's dive in with, with number nine. I mean, we, we don't, you know, we don't really have any...
We have intention. Expressed in the purpose statements for the Village Growth Area that talk about a more densely settled development pattern, anticipating multi-story buildings and the types of densities that we're, we're planning for kind of require multi-story buildings.
And yet we continue to see this single...
And, and we allow for single-story buildings. So the Kenny Drugs project, that Heinsberg Center project is a good example of that. There was a lot of debate about whether Kenny Drugs should be a single-story building as it was originally proposed or a multi-story building with additional uses on the second floor. And in that case, you know, it landed that it was, it was still going to be, it is a single-story building, but obviously all the other buildings around it were multi-story buildings. And so there's a, it's a little bit blended there with a medium-sized box store that has been chopped up and roof lines designed to give it some differentiation from a traditional box and then surrounding multi-story buildings.
Raise the eve line some to imply another story.
A bit, yes.
Looks sort of like a one and a half.
It definitely looks like a one and a half-story building with multiple roof lines. No, it's not.
I guess to another place that I'm leaning with this is, I don't want to discourage somebody. I mean, I hope this wouldn't discourage some development, possibly if we said they all have to be multi-story.
Well, I wonder if the Kenny Drugs and Heinsberg Center project is a lesson in that requiring it for all buildings might be a bit much.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Whereas requiring it for a percentage or a percent, like I mentioned here, a percentage of the streetscape might be a way to go.
Right, yeah. That's an interesting point.
And we're, we're still, I think all of us are still imagining no more than three stories. We're not going to talk about increasing the height. I mean, you go to four stories, now you're talking about an elevator, you're talking about questions with the fire department, terms of safety issues and so forth.
Well, we're talking about elevators even with, with two and three-story buildings, depending on how many units, residential units are in them. But the fire protection issue is a real...
Four definitely.
I will say that our current density bonus structure, which is another topic that you wanted to look at someday, we're not doing that now, this is design standards, but in section 2.9 does, does allow for additional height for non-residential buildings.
Beyond 35 feet.
Yeah, yeah. And so essentially with a maximal bonus, you could get, you could get another story.
Yeah.
Now, what Mitch and I tell folks, developers like Blackrock and the like, is, is that, you know, we want the density, we want it planned well, we want it to look nice, all those things, but we tell them, we've been, this community has planned for but has not yet acquired an aerial truck for fire protection and until we do, those taller buildings just aren't possible. Even three-story buildings are very difficult or, or not possible to do at this point. Now that will change if we, if the community invests in that aerial truck, but we don't have it yet, so. I think Al Barber would like us to be cognizant of that as we think about, you know, what we might encourage, require or incentivize.
Yeah.
Because he's pretty concerned about fire protection.
I think it's safe to say he really would like to have one.
Oh, absolutely.
He definitely would have.
No, no, Al's making the case that this community needs one already and that it's not so much that new development that the Planning Commission might want is driving the need, that the need's already here. But I think he's also sensitive to the fact that the community hasn't, and the select board hasn't pursued one and so...
So let's get back to multi-story buildings. I, I would be interested, I would be interested in just looking at some language you might put together on something in between, you know, maybe not as drastic as, as requiring, although, you know, perhaps, possibly on, you know, on a main drag like 116, we might want to consider requiring. Multi, multi-story and that, I would include, you know, that would include the faux, you know, that doesn't count doing a faux second story with fake windows, yeah, yeah. So I would be interested in looking at some language around that and then we could maybe have a, have a discussion then about whether that's something that we want to do. Does that, does that sound reasonable without...
Makes me feel better.
Yeah, well, that's a point in that is for you to get, there to be enough consensus that it's worth me spending some time on.
Right.
So if you think it is, then I will. I think Winuski is one that I'd like to talk to their planner some more about. Dan reviewed the Winuski Form Based Code and I was in a meeting with the Winuski planner this afternoon. He was talking about a couple of their projects and, you know, they've, they've designed that form-based code along their main gateways into the downtown. It's not a, you know, rectangular district, it's a linear district along those gateways. And that's where the form-based code applies. And, you know, I think because we're a rural village, we don't need to worry about multi-story buildings off in the back 40 of the developments that we're looking at, but I wonder if on the, on the front street sides, that's where we want to see buildings that have more mass and, you know, relate to the street more, narrow the, effectively visually narrow the street because the buildings...
And I like that word, linear, describing it that way. Instead of zones.
No, it's like Marie said, I think a lot of this gets back to, hey, is there some differentiation between all the districts that encompass the, you know, Village Growth Area?
Yes, for sure.
I think there is. And I concur with you. Okay, let's get to that at some point. But insofar as just heights and mandating heights or numbers of stories, it could be like gasoline standards, you know, hey, you just have to average something. The land's valuable, you know? And we've kind of cored in the town in a good way, I think. So we've placed emphasis on preservation of the hinterland. Well, what does that mean? That means that you, you make compact, walkable, dense, and in many cases slightly taller structures in our village area. So maybe it's, it's not always so much, you know, a mix. Where does that mix derive from? Maybe it's an average. You say, when you're developing that lot, the structures have to average two stories. Well, you can put a one-story building in there, you can put a three-story building in there and...
It averages out.
And it averages, but it has to average out to two or, or something like that.
One thing that South Burlington did, right, in this regard was the, when they set their form-based code zoning in place, they, they said, hey, you can build a, a one-story building, but it has to be, you know, so far away from another one-story building, which basically, you know, sets the, sets the ratio of, of one story to anything else.
That, yeah, that's, that's interesting.
Right, and if you did that and, and you probably said something about, you know, what your, what your maximum facade for a one-story building is, or I'm kind of thinking of the Vergennes example where there's a fairly good chunk of a block that was a replacement building in there. It would, you know, it got real noticeable and real different. You probably want to, want to avoid that. I think those two types of things together could, you know, work to give you some flexibility and at the same time, right, the scale that you want.
I like it.
Can we say no fake second stories? And the one along Williston on their main road there, it's just, I, I find it very objectionable.
Who are you referring to? I didn't, I'm not sure what you mean.
Across from Christmas Tree Shop, the other side of the road. Well, there's the, there's, isn't it Quiznos and...
The newer ones with the...
Yeah, the dental, Aspen Dental.
Yeah, Aspen Dental and Panera maybe.
It reminds me of a western cowboy down. It's just...
On the corner for sure, it does look like that. But they all are two-story, aren't they?
But I don't think they're real.
No, I know the one that you're talking about on the curve there, the Handy Zone, that is two-story even though it does look westernish. Because it was a Ponderosa Steakhouse originally or something like that.
I don't know about the newer buildings, the Aspen Dental and those.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought they were two-story.
I thought they were, but I don't know for sure.
But I don't, I don't recall.
I think they are. I don't, I don't think the space above the CVS is used.
Probably the same as what...
But I, I think the other stuff is, is either rented or...
I assumed they were all two-story. I know that the one on the curve is two-story because there was physical therapy upstairs.
Somebody upstairs.
There's a partial second floor.
Maybe just partial, could be.
Well, that'll be a homework assignment, drive around and look some more.
Get him back to Heinsberg.
Go in and inspect.
So does anyone, is anyone interested in seeing language around the building height relief?
Yeah.
What Eric, what we just discussed, it's all interesting.
Maybe there's several different techniques. I mean, we've heard three or four of them already. Maybe you could summarize those, Alex, in what you're laying out, like, we could do this, we could do that, we could do this, we could do all, just give us some descriptions.
Basically, plagiarized from other towns.
Just some direction, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I'll look into that. My only hiccup with the building height relief idea is that I, I don't think that we want to compel two-story buildings to set their second story back. So I think we're talking about taller buildings, three stories. And again, we are bumping up against the, how do you do a three-story building in Heinsberg until you have an aerial? How do you do a three-story building in Heinsberg until you have an aerial truck? And we don't have one yet, but I suppose.
Zoning is forward looking.
Right, we're anticipating the acquisition of that. Infrastructure. It's certainly in the capital budget and there's.
Writing this for five to twenty years out.
Yeah.
And if it's a percentage or an average. It doesn't mean they have to do it, the three-story. If, if we went with one of those suggestions.
What as a priority, I mean, if we can't do three and four-story buildings. How could this be a priority?
You mean because of fire protection?
Yeah, you can't do it.
I, I think we're just looking ahead and thinking that at some point.
Well, they share. I mean, we have fire, even now, another town will come to this town with an aerial truck. It's just that Al doesn't think that's great. And maybe he's.
If, if, you know, if five years from now we get an aerial truck. We're, we're going to be in the position of, oh my God, now people are going to be building five-story buildings. We have to. You know, why don't we just? Set it down now and not have to.
Without requiring them to.
Correct, yeah.
I think at some point. In all this, there's still is a cap. I mean, I don't imagine, other than institutional structures. You know, like church fires and things like that, that. We're going to have five-story buildings in this village in the next. Twenty to forty years, you know?
We are, we aren't.
Are you or not?
Right, but I thought we were just talking three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the building relief thing is, I think is a real interesting. Because you looked at that building on the corner in Vergence, you know, by the green. I think it was a hotel.
Yeah.
They had two porch levels. It didn't step back, but just the impact of that.
Not having the porch.
Layer cake. Uh, was, made that a very friendly little structure. And the same. You know, I've certainly seen projects that might go up two stories and then step back. Not only does it give it sort of visual relief, it's a little like a sloped roof and some. But if you're living on that top floor, that third floor, say. Now suddenly you have rooftop or an outdoor space that can be a really wonderful, uh, amenity, you know, potentially. So, and that starts to give it the kind of variety that I hear people talk about from time to time. So I think. Addressing that topic in some way, I'm not sure exactly how you do it. Um, is worth our while.
Well, that can be part of what we're talking about.
Exactly.
And the notion of being able to use that. Uh, roof area. I, I think we should seriously talk about, is that something that you do also? You step back and you make that a surface that people can use. Rather than it just being a roof.
Right.
Right.
At least we should, we should consider that.
So have, have we given you enough?
For those two who want me to do some research and do some drafting. So we'll do. Which one would you like to discuss next?
I think architectural variety is, uh. An important. Part of it to, to avoid the.
Monotony?
Yeah.
Yeah, we keep coming.
We mention that in almost every conversation we have.
So this one is addressed in our current regulations. My note was needs improvement. So I, I agree. I think we could do a better job than we.
In mind, what were you thinking of when you say need improvement? What specifically?
Um, yeah, good question. So if we, if I draw you to the sections that I called out, let's go to the front building facade requirements. Five point twenty-two point three, number three. Which is right here on screen. Um, so this section requires here, I can make that a little bigger since we have more screen to work with. I won't read it to you, but the idea is that you want, uh, road-facing facades to have windows and be compatible architecturally with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and that bigger buildings and non-residential buildings, uh, be defined, you know, with these features that are called out. So I, we, we copped this language largely from Williston, uh, you know, an earlier version of Williston's language. I still think it's reasonable. It demonstrates some intent. But I don't think it addresses the, the finer tune stuff that you were talking about in terms of permeability and. I guess we have a separate item for permeability, but, but we don't, it doesn't address, um, variety. So thi- this says you have to have things that attract the eye and make it more of an interactive experience. But it doesn't, it doesn't, um. Prevent four buildings in a row from, from having the exact same look. And just, you know, having a flat facade with windows and doors and blah.
Or space, you know, or distance from the street or.
Right.
Any difference in character. And I, I think that. You know, that the form-based codes that we've looked at from other places have a maximum facade distance. That's number one. Number two, you, you look at, you look at this one and, you know, it talks about. Um, you know, windows, right? Okay, they include windows. So Kenny's includes windows. And, and I noticed the same thing at the CVS. In, in Williston is, yes, they have windows that face the street. And in both cases, right, there are, they are blocked up. And they offer absolutely no permeability. So. There, there needs to be a little more specis-, you know, specificity if you don't want, you know. The only difference being glass versus, you know, concrete and they're both, you know, opaque.
If you want to see an interesting, uh, differentiation, I think this is still the case. Look at our Kenny's, those windows, and then look at the Kenny's on Shelburne Road, um. Near the Hickok Boardman Building that's under renovation right now.
Yeah.
Sort of near, on your way to the Dunkin' Donuts on Shelburne Road, the Burlington side of Shelburne Road. Um, that Kenny's is right on the street, has windows facing the street, and I, there must be a different standard. I think that they have. Displays in their windows, not just opaque. Um, now. I believe they have racks behind those displays, so you can't see into the interior space. But the window displays are kind of à la, you know.
It's like a box, a shadow box.
Yeah, it's like going past Macy's or something where they have, you know, a window display of some sort. Anyways, check it out. Uh, uh, it's, it's an interesting. I remember walking by it when they opened thinking, I wonder if they were made to do that? Cause, you know, a lot of drugstores do what our Kenny's did, which is just, you make a portion of the window opaque and. Um, it's not terribly unattractive, but there's certainly no. Interaction between what's going on in the building and the street.
It beats, it beats the bylaw, not the antenna of the building.
Are you saying it's a window, but not really a window?
No, it's a window with display. The one in, the one on Shelburne Road. There's something displayed behind the window.
It's like a department store.
And what's here?
And ours had, doesn't have that. Those windows are.
You can't see through the window? No, you can't. They're blocked out. There's block.
And they have, they have merchandise.
There's coolers on the other side of those windows.
That's not fair. And there's so much junk in front, in front of them anyway.
Merchandise, merchandise.
There's coolers, there's coolers.
We know that.
The police department, the new police department has windows on the second level.
But they're not real.
And, no, they are. And you can see through them, at least initially. I haven't noticed lately, but what you see is the roof structure. There, there's no finished materials or.
Well, the downstairs ones are always, the shades are always drawn and you can't see in.
Right, that's the police department's policy.
Add something in that.
I think there's a fair amount that you want done in this, in this category.
And also, I, you know, I would add with a permeability, and I don't know if these want to be combined or not. But it's something to do with, and I don't know. The length of a building and whether there's actual walk-through permeability. Um.
Frontage.
But again, um.
Yep.
In, in all of this, I, I, I'm very wary of the, the faux entrances, the faux windows. Um.
So are you talking about an alleyway when you say that?
Yeah.
I mean, that's literally what, what we're talking about, that there would be a place where there's nothing. Or sidewalk or something like that, but not building.
You could walk from the street side to the back side.
Sure, but you could walk through or drive through or whatever.
Could be that the entrances to the two buildings are.
Are off that.
Right there on the corner, so.
Or inside that passageway as they are at the marble works.
Yeah.
You go between buildings and their entrances there.
Yeah, right, yep.
Do we say anything about these?
Side entrance.
These, this permeability leading to anything?
Beats the other side of the building.
Sunshine.
It would be really nice, like John said, if you, you had entrances on the side. I think that's amazingly.
Or you went to something.
So if you want rear parking and, and you want an established entryway up front. Right, to address the street, you better, you be, you better have a way to get there.
Right, if, if, just, let's just say the particular design of this development or this lot meant that what was behind was. Um. Service area dumpster, you, you might not necessarily need an alleyway or, or, or pass-through, you know, for that sort of use or, or design. But in other places where there's parking behind, or maybe in a second use behind, then it would make sense. We would certainly tend to encourage parking behind. It can be on the side as well. Um. But I'm just thinking in our village, especially in our village zoning district, in our village northwest zoning district, the way they're configured now. It's not all, um. Designed to be, uh. The uses are not exclusively, uh, service establishments, retail shops and residences. There could be some light industrial uses as well. And for some of those. If it was a dark star kind of a, ki- kind of a use, you, you wouldn't necessarily want to encourage, you know, pass-through, uh.
So do you address that then in what we're writing in these pass-throughs?
Yeah, I think, I think it should be. I, I'm not convinced, I, I, I'll, I'll draft something on both permeability and architectural variety. I'm not convinced that the, the ability to walk through, um, the, the building, uh, frontage to the back of the lot. Is as important in what you saw to the other sorts of permeability issues, you know, being able to.
See the front of the building from the street.
Yeah, see the front of the building, see, see into the interior of the building for compatible uses, you know, retail uses and that sort of thing. Um, and, and have enough, uh, variety of design elements within that horizontal space between the street and the front of the building. To make it an inviting area. So like Kenny's is, is one thing I'm thinking of. That versus what we saw in Vergence. The Vergence, you know, streetscape was very inviting and there were planters and street lamps and different course, you know, levels of sidewalk, but still. It invited you to come off the street and come into that establishment. Kenny's gets lots of people coming into it. They don't have a problem with that. But I've never seen anybody walk up to the side of their building that faces the street where like the chairs and the coolers and those things are. You just never see anybody doing that. Everybody makes a beeline for just the front door. And so. I don't know if that's partly permeability, but in any case.
Well, in, in Vergence, there was not on the main streets, but we also walked. On the south side on a secondary street, and we were noticing there. A lot of permeability to other uses, like you mentioned. Essentially another apartment or another place to live besides the one on, on the road. So it, it, it can be a very desirable thing to increase density if you, if you allow, I mean. Suggestions that Ralph showed us on the property that Jeru has. That all of that seemed to work very well for another rank of buildings behind those on the main street.
Mm-hmm.
Which, which you might want to go to from the main street.
Yeah, so. Yeah, well, like I said, I'll, I'll work on, um. I will work on both number two and number five. I may reach out. To the guy who stepped away and you actually on number two. Cause I, that one, I'm, I'm more, most fuzzy on that one as to like how to write that. Um. But, yeah.
Including roofline, you're gonna look, do a. Something around.
Yeah, so roofline is one of our existing, um, requirements. And I, I, again, it was, it was lifted from Williston at the time. And, um, it's clear to me that it's not, it's not very specific. Um, and we haven't had a knock-down, drag-out fight with any developers yet about what constitutes a moderately to steeply pitched roof. But. Um, it, I think we could probably have some better language there to make sure that we get. That, that there's flexibility to do innovative design and also that we, we get what we want and not. You know, just a, a facade roof that has a steep pitch, you know, front portion, but then the entire rest of it is flat. Um, I don't think that was the intent of the regs, but one might argue that it was allowed.
You certainly see buildings like that.
Yeah, all the time, all the time. Um, but I think what you saw in Vergence too with rooflines was, um. That the variation within them helped break up the, the massing of the building. So unlike Finney Crossing where you just looked up and it was. The exact same roofline all the way down the block. Vergence, of course, Vergence developed over time, but, you know, had differing rooflines and that was pleasant and made for more village experience.
What did you mean about Kenny, about not seeing anybody enter on the side? I, I wasn't following.
No, I was saying that I, uh, there, that streetscape in front of Kenny's, um. Doesn't really encourage people to shop on the, on the outside of their store.
From the outside.
To, to step up to the outside of their store next to their front door and like peruse the merchandise. There's something different about it that doesn't.
There's nothing to peruse. It's all building.
Cause you can't see the merchandise. It's no big deal.
No, no, no. I mean, the, the merchandise that they put out, the plastic chairs, the coolers, the things that they stack outside the building.
But if you park on the side, you do.
No, I know. I think that's part of the problem is everybody would park on the side. Right? And there, there's nothing to invite you past the door.
Right.
Onto the, onto the sidewalk along one sixteen. So if you don't, if you don't park in the parallel parking along one sixteen, right.
Gotcha. I see.
You don't even see that.
Right, okay. Got it. I understand. Part of it is because it's, there, there's nothing beyond it. If there were another store beyond it, people, there'd be more foot traffic there. But like the difference between that and say Obashan. Which also has a lot of merchandise out in front of its building. And I'm not saying that the Firehouse Plaza is the right design that we're looking for, but, but I, but it seems.
You can walk around there and look at everything.
You could walk around in it. People seem to interface with it more.
Right, okay. Now I understand. Thank you.
It almost seems like that front area of Kenny's not to put them down is like more of a storage area for some merchandise than it is an actual like, here, come and shop outside.
I mean, for that matter, the, the area on the one sixteen side of Bristol Bakery really isn't used either. You know, there's, there's nothing to keep people there. It's a.
It's an entryway.
It's an entryway.
Two ways.
It's a shame, yeah, they could do it, a couple of chairs up front.
But the, the, the windows work very well. You can see what's going on inside all along one sixteen.
It's real.
Yeah, and the way they've developed the farmall side with the outdoor seating, I think, sort of does what they, as much as they really want to do in terms of outdoor. Seating, but sure, from a main street standpoint, it's nice to have the ability all along that.
From, from a serving area, I, I, I would agree, you know, having, having tables that are waited on and cleaned and things like that. Um, nothing would preclude them from putting a bench out front on the one sixteen side to say. Yeah, you know, you want in, you got your coffee, you know, here's a place to sit down, you know?
It's an up front porch and watch the, uh.
Yeah, eat your pastry and, or whatever.
I don't think that porch is wider than, to do that, you have to do it on the warm earth. Well, it's something in the brattle. It's not very wide in there.
Yeah, well, that's, that may be part of the.
The brattleboro regs, they were required to put a bench every, I'm going to say hundred feet.
But even, if, if you look at Bristol Bakery in Bristol, right, the sidewalk really is not that wide there. But they, they basically have, you know, tables that are two seats, you know, across from each other, fairly narrow.
They really cram them in and it works.
And it wor-, yeah.
But that is wider than their porch over here.
You, you know, I, I, I've sat in, in Bristol before in, in one of those, one of those spots.
Okay, come back to Heinsberg.
Right, right, okay.
All right, so what, what, what else, um, what else would we like to see some language around? I mean. Related to what we've just been talking about, seven streetscape and building details.
I think number ten is kind of an interesting. Ten and eleven, you know, are kind of counter opposites in some ways. But I think, um, you know, are we going to see this kind of development here? Hard to say. But, you know, um.
Well, I mean, I think both of these things to me speak to the density you want on the principal street, you know, you know, how you want this to look, street-facing side. So 10 is that, that maximum facade without stepping back or stepping forward or providing some.
Recess.
Yeah, visual, visual change, right? And 11 is, right, if you, you know, envision lots, right, how much of a lot, at least in the dimension of the street, you know, can you fill, right? And, and we, we used to, we used to do this like, here's the maximum. In the case of South Burlington again, it was like, it was almost like they were dictating the minimum that you could, you could have. So approaching it from the other side, trying to get that very kind of dense, you know, feel.
Well, like I, not to say that it was a be-all by any means, but those little sketches I showed you guys last, last time, where the development was, you know, I'd consider it fairly intense, you know, along that eastern side of 116. Just for fun, I sort of measured the length of most of that property from that house that's just across the canal, you know, down to the start of the Obashans' lot. Yeah, it was, it was roughly 450, 480 feet. And then I had all those buildings strewn across there. That represented, I could show it to you again, that represented 75% of that 450 feet was building. Now, it was interrupted, you could go through it at times. And the same is true with this maximum length of monolithic building facade, you know, how often, at what kind of interval do you sort of interrupt in some way, or mandate some kind of interruption, you know? And it was a little like, I've said it other times, where I sort of took the scale of some of the existing buildings that we have in town, you know, they're 40, 50 feet. 50 is about the maximum dimension. And then maybe there's a recess, there's an alleyway, there's an entrance, you know, there's some kind of. But I, I think addressing that topic, and maybe it's not something that we're gonna find happening all over town by any means. Certainly not in the next decade or so, but.
But how do you deal with that if the lots are already existing? The size of the lots, do you know?
Well, that one was existing, I mean, that's all.
There's three of them right there that you just talked about.
Yeah, I just lumped them all together.
Right, but what if the person, what if the developer?
One person wants to do something and the other doesn't.
That's my point.
Well, I was trying to get to, you know, the important commercial ways, say for example. Lots, a lot of balls in the air there.
No, it's fine, and I, you know.
Do you say like, what, what is that magic number? Is it like, hey, you have to have 75% of the lot width has to have frontage on the main right-of-way that you're facing? Okay, that's just 75%, I don't know, is that magic? You certainly, when you walk down the street in Bristol or Virgin's, it certainly was 75% on multiple lots, I assume. In fact, it was pretty much contiguous, the buildings were jumping up and down, but.
There wasn't any separation.
There was very little, very little. So 75% actually, for the kind of intense, walkable heart of the village that we sometimes talk about, doesn't sound like it's too crazy to me.
On the commercial side of that street, it was 100%.
Yeah, it's like 100%.
And it was, all three blocks were pretty much like that in Virgin's. On the other hand, you know, like Alex was saying, there's an awful lot of interest just given ramps and topography and, and, you know, clear identification. Not all of the entrances were recessed or that sort of thing. But I think mandating some kind of breakage in the link is also something that's interesting.
The notion of, the notion of using dimensions that exist in our village already in terms of frontage, I think is a valuable one.
Yeah, I, I would venture John on that.
Well, look at what you have.
Probably well less than 75%, you know, if you went from Silver Street to Mechanicsville Road and took all the building fronts, you'd be hard pressed to make it 50%, I think.
Yeah, that, that is a.
Means a school would bump it up.
It's a real conundrum in Heinsburg, because some communities have historic downtown cores that you can look to and say, if new development's happening over here, let's try to respect what happened there and learn, and emulate or learn from it. And we just don't have that. And so, we know, we know we're planning for additional development and growth that's, that's denser than what the current village looks like, and so we want to be specific about some of these things. But it's hard to look back at what we have and say.
That's our guide.
That's our guide, yeah, cause it isn't gonna, it isn't necessarily.
We're not gonna make what we want.
I don't think so. But, but, but it's hard. How do you talk to the community about that? Cause there are community members, you know, folks who are not thinking, planning thoughts all the time that are like, I don't want to live in South Burlington, I want Heinsburg Village to still look like Heinsburg Village when we get done with it. Even if there's a bunch more people here and maybe some more stores and such. So it is a fine line. I think it's important to do these things and also recognize that it needs to have a Heinsburg solution, a Heinsburg rural village solution, which may look a little different than a Virgin's village solution or a Virgin's downtown solution or a, you know, a different community.
Or when we get to that point in the conversation, do we want this to apply? Where do we want this to apply?
Exactly, maybe there's a very limited area where it's going to be that intense. And outside of that, either the standard doesn't exist or it's a different percentage.
Do we think that what we saw from Ralph, it would result in a Heinsburg-looking development? You know, you were just questioning, is this Heinsburg or South Burlington? What about what Ralph sketched out? What's that gonna look like? What if you did a little more rendering of the facades?
I'm beat already.
Of that, I know. We could hire someone to.
Well, what do you think, John? What, what do you think?
My sense is that the size of the buildings, I'm thinking of the flat-roofed buildings here on this side of of 116, a block down. That if we use that as a gauge, as a standard, and, and maybe it's not a hard standard, maybe it's between this and that in terms of width, but something like that proportion could be a standard for development on whatever size lots. If there's a lot that's wide enough, maybe you have two of those increments that are either separated or set back or whatever.
I totally get what you mean.
Narrow lot.
Those buildings could become the de facto width, after which you have to include a variation or a step or something. Yeah, that's a slightly different question from what I thought you were asking, which is, taken in its totality, was Ralph's representation of that entire stretch, Heinsburg?
Right.
Or not?
Right, I was asking that too, everybody.
That's what I was turning the question back on you. What do you think about that?
Well, I think it would, it would be compatible. I, I think it would, it could create an image that was consistent with what we've got started here, that we started back, when did we start? 18-something? You know, I think, I think it would be compatible, yeah. That, that's my reaction. But I wonder what everyone, what, what did we all imagine that we were hearing from, from Ralph? I think it's interesting when you don't show pictures and you simply use words, everybody thinks of a different picture in their head. But when you show a picture, when you show a picture, now, now you're talking more solid physical reality. I don't know, so I would, I would be fine with.
Assuming that I was misunderstood, it's probably a good idea. I was suggesting something like that in very, very few locations in this town.
Yeah.
That could swallow that kind of, you know, approach. That's why I think what you said and Alex, there needs to be some differences in how we tackle different parts of our village.
Right, yep. So, so I'm gonna get us back to this, because I think we've got an extra 15 minutes that I'd like to put toward this to see if we can actually identify any more that we, we would like to see some language around. Is anyone? I mean, I'll, I'll step up and talk about street grid, because I remember when we had some panel discussions several years ago, I remember, you know, asking one of those speakers about, you know, how, how do we? I can't even remember the question now. How do we get away from the sort of suburban sprawl and, and encourage a more, you know, dense, walkable neighborhoods? And the answer was, make sure you've got street grids. Rather than, you know, curving wide, wide roads. I mean, obviously in, you know, in the eastern part of town, that's not gonna work. The hilly sections, even, even Thistle Hill, that wouldn't have done much good. Actually Maggie, on the west side, I wonder how much that would work. I like, I mean, I get what you're saying and I think it's a great idea, but the way of the topography of our town, I don't even know if that would ever, because we have this way, so much wetlands and. Right, right. Although Grabowski's already doing it. A little bit, but he's gonna be, he can only go so far. Yeah. Well, I think he's gonna stop when, once this. Right. Next one is done. But you're, you're right. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just saying, I don't know if that would work in Heinsburg Village. Because we're limited on one side by the hilly topography, and on this side, it's so wet in the back here. Well, again, we're, we're talking village and we're talking.
True.
So I'm not against that, I don't want to think about it.
I don't, I don't think, Maggie, I don't, I don't think, what I hear you saying is that the street, the street grid idea is, is literally a grid of, of straight lines. And I don't think that's necessary. I think that the aspect of the, of the street grid is that there are many, many ways to connect between all kinds of locations. And if those connections are curved or straight, that, that doesn't damage the connect, you know, that doesn't affect the connection. And that's, I think, what's important with the grid. I absolutely agree that a grid is a very good concept to cover a neighborhood, but not necessarily with straight streets. Particularly, you know, I think about the Quinn property on the south side of Mechanicsville Road that is hilly. Definitely hilly. It's, the streets should respond to that topography and still be a grid.
Yeah, again, the eastern side of the town is, is less.
I can see it happening on the Black Rock property too.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
You know, it's, there is a variety of topography there. There are some places that slope more than others, and it's not flat, it's not Kansas, you know? And, and I think it adds character to a neighborhood and interest to the people who live there by allowing the streets to find their path with the clues of the topography. So grids, yes, but straight lines, no.
Yeah, I think if you want to relax from, you know, full adherence to orthogonality and just say that, you know, you need an efficient means of kind of going both east-west and north-south or more or less, you know, you don't, you don't want two long, parallel streets with no way to get between street A and street B, right?
Right, that kind of thing.
And I think that's possible, that we can find a way to describe that in terms of our standards. I think we can guide people.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of think this is crazy, I'm referring to South Burlington so much when we're, when we're very different places. But I, I seen or remember something in their, their language about block sizes. Right, so maybe, you know, maybe you can adapt that, and that's kind of a measure of, you know, how far apart these, you know, connections in the alternate direction, you know, need to be apart. You know, and I think they set like minimums as well as maximums, so they didn't want things too chopped up, right? They, they wanted that, you know, higher density usage, but they, you know, did want a kind of a maximum so that there was some permeability through a developed area.
So Maggie, I don't think that, say grids are bad at all.
Are there any others here that anyone would like to? Well, the on-street parking is another one that piques my interest, only because said required versus encouraged, because we, we don't own the main street, which we've all discussed, and I know that's come up before and nothing's ever come of it. Well, it doesn't mean it, it won't, yeah, it doesn't mean it won't change. It does, no, I agree, but it doesn't seem, yeah, I mean, that's looking way out.
It's not just Route 116. The, the current, again, purpose section in 3.1 talks about internal streets should, to the extent possible, accommodate on-street parking.
Which is great, and.
My, my question is, should that be changed to say, internal streets shall include on-street parking? So that it's not a advisory thing, it is, you gotta work it into your plan, maybe it's not gonna be along the entire street.
No, I like that, Alex, and, and actually, on 116, I would love to see that too.
Right, just with recognition that we can't.
We can't, yeah, that's my point. Why don't you put that on, just so we can have the, have the conversation about it? How about right above it, number seven, streetscape and building details?
I'm a, I'm a fan of porches. Again, not faux porches, but. I'm a fan of landscaping and flower boxes, something to make it soften it, make it more inviting.
And again, add that, add that variety that we're, that we're looking for. Street lamps, excuse me. Everybody likes street lamps, don't, well, I don't know. Not everybody likes too much light in Heinsburg. Yeah, right. Alex, again, you, you put needs improvement. Yeah, what does that mean? What's, yeah.
Um, I put that because I, I think that the, the sections that refer to visual interest and the like could be, could be complied with just by doorways, traditional doorways and windows and rooflines and such, and maybe differing building material. But I think that this streetscape detailing that, that, that I heard you talking about and that we saw some of, especially in Virgin's, is, is more than that. It's, it's the porches, it's the entryway, it's different sorts of entryways that have depth to them, I guess. That, that's the other thing that we kept railing on with the Finney Crossing project, right? That it was mixed use, that it had, you know, residential buildings and then also mixed buildings. But that, as you walked along, at least, I forget if it was Zephyr Lane or the name of that main thoroughfare through there, it, it just felt flat, just a, a flat face of a building with doorways that were flat. And so, I said needs improvement, because I think, I'm not sure that our design standards today, I, I think actually our design standards today could result in that. In fact, I think these are the, some of the Williston design standards that created that. And so, if you, if you want more visual interest, like street lamps and flower boxes and generous porches and entryways with depth and that sort of thing, we ought to just say that. And provide a picture.
Different materials, facade to facade. You know, back to your comment on really defining what a moderately and steep pitch roof is and, you know, how to calculate it. You know, I think you probably need to go in depth to allow some flexibility for couple-ahs and. You know, I think you probably need to go in depth to allow some flexibility for couple of us and things like that.
Okay, I, I, I'm feeling like, well, I'm feeling like we've pretty much assured that Alex won't have any social life at all for the next month, but would anyone like to pile anything else on? Setbacks, rear and side yard parking?
Alex feels that may be sufficient.
I, I would, I'm gonna send you a, there was a paragraph in Jericho's regs on, on corporate branding, and I'm gonna send you that. Alex, I thought we might plagiarize that, but I'd like that to be a part of our conversation as well.
In the Brattleboro regs, in the Village District, no franchise or corporate architecture is permitted. So no golden arches, no typical Kinney. Which-
Why don't you send that to me and I'll-
I don't know if this, my other thought is here or somewhere else in the regs, but requiring solar panels on roofs. What's the state by 2030? We have to be, can't remember. I'm thinking, yeah. If it's a flat roof.
What I have seen, or I think I've seen, in other communities is not a requirement to install solar photovoltaics, but rather that, that there are just building design standards that require that buildings be solar ready. So they're constructed to be able to accommodate those. And then we don't get in their pocketbooks about whether they're doing that versus, the reason is that sometimes you get more bang for your buck by increasing the efficiency of the building and the building envelope than by putting on solar. And I don't know that we want to dictate which way they want to save the world, you know, make a tight building that has super efficient pumps and heating HVAC or whether we want them to have an average building envelope and then use renewables. But solar ready buildings, I think, are something we could, we could toy with. I could try to find some language on. Certainly, I've always thought the same thing with regard to the larger buildings with flat roofs, like what Haniford was proposing and what we see at, we're not gonna see the big boxes that Taft's Corners has, but even the Kinney's building is relatively large and, you know, rooftop is sizable. And, and actually, the buildings that would potentially be happening in the Village Northeast zoning district, you know, are going to be larger industrial buildings. And it just seems silly not to have them at least ready for solar.
All right, do you feel like we've weighed you down enough?
Well, yeah, it doesn't sound like you really kicked out anything, although you didn't discuss setbacks. So I think I'll just draft you up, you know, a little something on everything and we'll go from there.
Okay. Okay. Awesome, thank you, everybody. That was, that was impressive. Is it time to hear about municipal planning grant ideas?
Uh, yeah. So I put this in your packet, right? We apply for this municipal planning grant every year. We have not been successful the last several years. Hopefully, that's in part due to the fact that we had lost our village center designation, which gets you something like 15 or 20 priority points in their scoring system. We have that designation back now, so I'm hoping, hoping we'll be more competitive. In any case, Maggie and I talked about several ideas. I ran them all by the folks at the state agency who, who provides these grants and said, "Help us, you know, we haven't been getting the grant. Which of these projects is competitive and which isn't?" And Jacob was his name, he helped me sort of call one of the ideas that you and I talked about, Maggie. So this two pager that you have in front of you talks about the two remaining ideas. Both of them are similar to projects or grant applications we applied for in the last two years and were rejected. So they need to be rewritten in a way that is more appealing based on the grant priorities. But again, hopefully with the village center designation, will be a bit more competitive. So one of them is to tag on to this project that we're doing, architectural and streetscape design standards. We applied for the, a grant to get consultant horsepower on this last year and didn't get it. So we're, this is, we're doing it on our own, right? Well, one of the things that you've expressed interest in, and Maggie has hammered into my head, we need to have is, is pictures or sketches or graphics to go with these words. And I am not a, I am not a graphic design person, I'm not Ralph, I, I don't have those chops. So the one idea for the grant proposal is to get 10,000 or so to hire someone to do that. To take what we've, what we come up with and make a pictorial representation of it and, and help us make the presentation of it in the regs just easy, you know, and simple. So that's one grant idea, seems very appropriate given what we're doing. It, due to the grant timing, it might stretch out when this gets, you know, delivered to the public and, for a public hearing and then delivered to the select board. You know, the grants are announced in December and then we probably could have a consultant onboard first of the year or maybe mid-December. So if, if by some chance, you know, I drafted the perfect language and you saw it in a month and wanted to have a public hearing in November, it wouldn't be with any pictures. And if we had this money, maybe we would wait on that until early next year and do it with pictures. Yeah, right, that's overly optimistic anyways. So that's one idea, is to apply for some money to, to help, get some help doing pictures. I, on that note, I did contact the regional planning commission and said, "Listen, we're working on both building architecture and streetscapes and we'd like to have some sort of street typicals and cross-sections." And I see those in almost every transportation planning study that goes through the regional planning commission. Don't you guys have some library that we can just pick and choose from? And interestingly, I should send them to, there are a couple of websites where you can create these on your own on the website. And it's like a drag and drop thing, you can change widths and add buffers. And so they recommended those and I looked at them and thought, those might actually work to some degree. But it turns out they have somebody in-house that has some artistic talent and, and could help us with the streetscape piece of this. So I'm, fingers crossed, hopeful that we can actually extract some value out of the RPC on that front. And might only need the consultant horsepower for the pretty pictures of buildings, you know, to represent these permeability issues and such. Anyways, enough said, that's one idea. I think we could do that for, you know, in the $10,000 range based on the estimates we got last year for this project in which the cost breakdown was about that much for that element. The other idea is similar to a grant application we applied for two years ago. It relates very much to the recommendation you made when you delivered the official map revision proposal to the select board where you said, here's, you know, what we think the new map of future community facilities should look like. And then you had me write a couple paragraphs, or I wrote a couple and you thought that was reasonable, saying, "We, we need to do more fiscal planning." We need, you know, we got feedback that, at our hearing, that how are we gonna afford all this? How are we gonna pay for it? How are we gonna be able to maintain it? And, and we should really bring in an outside consultant who can help us ask the right questions and crunch the numbers to look at, if this much development happens, what's the grand list, how's the grand list gonna be affected? What's the increased revenue gonna be versus increased cost for services? What, you know, what will our impact fees bring in and how could we leverage more funding if we had additional impact fees? So this second grant proposal project is to do that. Hire up an economic analyst to come in and help us ask those questions and, and provide some answers.
Which would take all of the grant money.
Absolutely. In fact, I talked to John Slayson, who's on the DRB, works for Resource Systems Group, because I thought he might, he might have some suggestions on consultants for that. And he was nice enough to call me back today and we chatted for a while. He's not sure, I put feelers out to several different consultants to get ballpark cost estimates and I'm still working with those. But his impression is that for the maximum grant award, which is about 20,000, that's probably not enough to do the full scope of this fiscal analysis. And that we might want to refine the scope of that and maybe do it in pieces and have maybe this be the first, you know, first step, and then there'd be a second step to finish the analysis. But that was just his gut.
He thought it could be done in pieces?
Yes, yep. But, but I think he, we both agreed that there wasn't a lot of in-state talent or consulting horsepower for these kinds of questions. And that the out-of-state firms that work at a nationwide scale wouldn't even, wouldn't even look at us for $20,000. You know, he's like, you really have to, it has to be $100,000 for them to even sniff at. I have messages into one in North Carolina, one California, so maybe he's wrong, but we'll, we'll see. Anyways, that's the second idea.
So these two, isn't there some, from the RPC, some theme or something that this year that they're looking for? Not theme, some, yeah, what was it?
With the municipal planning grant, the priorities? Yeah, every, every year they state what their priorities are and they in fact require in the application that you tell them which of their priorities this project is going to address. Capital infrastructure is one of those priorities, so. And fiscal planning for capital infrastructure is one of those priorities. So I, I think it would be eligible, I think it might score reasonably well. My only concern with that, just literally based on this afternoon's conversation with John, is this, there might not be enough money in this funding source to make the project viable. And, and that's part of the grant application review. If they don't think that your project is viable, they're not gonna fund it. So I wanna, I wanna hear back from more of these economic analysis analysts to see if he's right about that or whether we could actually do something valuable for the $20,000 price point. But yeah, that's where we're at with that.
So the pretty pictures isn't part of what, part of their-
Oh, no, no, no. Jacob at the state felt that the architectural, pretty pictures could, yes. Would, would fit in with one or two of the priority areas as well. He felt that these two projects were, could be competitive. Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the third one was that you and I talked about that he thought, it was a stormwater related one. And he thought, there are other funding sources, this isn't the right one for that.
And that's the one that always comes to my mind is stormwater planning for the village because we need it and there's the Champlain Initiative.
Yep.
And we don't have an answer that doesn't cross, you know, property lines and-
So there's, there's, there's a lot of money that's being applied to that. And my contact with the state's impression was that the municipal planning grant is not the best funding source for that. And that if, if that's a priority for us, we should be looking at other funding sources through A&R and DEC.
I think that would be more money too. I mean, it's a good idea, but I-
We've done a lot of work on that. So to, to, to look at what we've already done and maybe help us prioritize some specific projects, I'm not sure it would be a huge amount of money. But Lewis Creek Association, as Kate knows, is, because Kate wrote the grant, has, has applied for some money to do some of that work, to work with landowners and identify possible projects and then maybe do a conceptual design for one specific project. And Kate, that application just went in like a week ago, right?
And we just got approved today.
Okay, then, so there you go. So thanks to Kate and LCA, we, you know, we have a partner who's actively beating the bushes on that front and-
And how much was that grant, Kate?
A little under 6,000. Mostly landowner outreach and one conceptual design. And it's just sort of within this little sub watershed, so. Not the whole town.
No, I'm sure the whole town is-
So I, Joe, to your point, I think the, the best way we can continue to work on that is to just support Lewis Creek Association and, and get the select board, you know, really on board that we, we need to partner and, and continue to plan with their, you know, with their assistance and such. I would also love for us to have somebody at the town level who was actually charged with that responsibility. You know, a stormwater, somebody who had stormwater in their job description. But we don't, yeah. So I gotta talk to the select board next week about these two ideas. The planning commission needs to endorse whichever one we go with. So this is your opportunity to say, "I like this one, I don't like this one," or, "They're both great, see what the select board thinks," or, "I don't like either of them, we want to do stormwater." What do you, what do you think?
I think we should do number two.
Which one is that, the capital infrastructure fiscal, okay?
I like number one. Only, I'm not against number two, I just think that that's gonna be more money and that's gonna, would hurt us in the chances of getting the grant. I think with, it doesn't even necessarily have to be a graphic artist. It could be a computer person is what I'm understanding now.
Yes, actually, I asked the consultant who worked on the Brattleboro regs and the Westford regs, because they both had pretty pictures in them.
Yeah.
And I said, Brandy Saxton is her name, she, she owns Place Sense, which, planning firm in Vermont. And I said, "You worked on those regs, who did you get to do the pictures?" And she said, "That was me with SketchUp and a lot of, you know, time." So it can be done, yeah, by somebody like that versus a graphic designer.
But you think that, so talking with her, you think that 10 is, is free?
She's, she's gonna give me a more formal cost estimate, but when I emailed her, she said, "You are seven on the list of municipal planning grant people who want estimates," so it'll be a week.
For the same kind of service?
No, just because there are very few planning consultants in Vermont. And so everybody goes to Brandy when it's municipal planning grant time to say, "For the application, I need a ballpark cost estimate, can you do one up for me?" But yeah, based on what we saw last year, I think 10 is, would be sufficient.
Yeah, I know someone who does work like that, not around here. And I, I really think that that would be enough money. A computer person, not a graphic artist.
What do other people think about these two?
Oh, Lord, we need them both. Right, that's true.
I'm kind of torn between them because I think both are important.
For sure. Well, I know the select board's gonna go for the, the capital planning.
You think the select board will?
They, they might. I, I, I hope to get more of these ballpark cost estimates or at least have the conversations, especially on the fiscal analysis. Because I, I agree that I think they'll be very attracted to that one. But if, if all of the people I talk to say, "That's a $50,000 project and a $20,000 project just isn't gonna, isn't gonna work," then-
See, that's, yeah, I mean, that's the thing that bugs me. You're telling me it's out-of-state resource. And you're telling me that, that in order for them to even see the bait, it's gotta be 100K. Okay, so we get 20K, we, we, you know, we, we de-scope, you know, what we're trying to do to fit in the 20K. Well, it's still less than 100K and they're not interested in the bait.
Yeah.
So-
Granted, this was all just sort of gut reaction on the conversation today. There is a firm locally, EPR, Jeff Carr, who's the state economist, his firm, they'd be perfectly fine and I'm just waiting to hear back from them. And there is a New Hampshire firm that worked for the city of St. Albans that they recommended, Municipal Resources, Inc. So they, they work with lots of rural towns in New Hampshire, so they, they might be more reasonable. I just need to hear back from them to see. I mean, well, I mean, I was gonna say, if, if, if the commission as a whole feels like either project would be valuable, maybe there's some, you know, lack of consensus on which one is the absolute best, I'm happy to take them both to the select board and say, "The planning commission endorses both of these, there's pros and cons. The decision is yours, select board." I mean, ultimately, it is theirs anyway. But I'm also, I'm also happy to go to them and say, "No, the planning commission said number two is the one." And, you know, if the cost estimates work out, well, that's the one we want to do, or vice versa.
Are, are there other sources that can be put together with a municipal planning grant to make the fiscal analysis successful?
Yeah, I, I don't know, that's a good question. I have another message in to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And when I hear back from them or repester them, I'll ask them that question. I've, I've not really seen grant sources that tackle that kind of an issue. So I, I don't know that there are, but that doesn't mean there aren't, I just, I'm not aware of them.
My experience with the land trust is when we were doing a project that needed additional funding beyond what we could raise and what the town was willing to put in. we found that we could do that with three or four outside sources.
Yep.
You know, all depended on if we get this one, then those folks are on board and, but we were able to work that where several projects had sources from outside foundations, grant sources, put together, we had enough to do the project.
Yes, and I, I wish that I had, you know, been working on these ideas for the last three months and had, you know, scoped out multiple funding sources. I haven't, these are recent, you know, put this together recently, specific for this grant source and so I, I don't, I'd have to do some digging to know.
I, I, you know, it's, my decision is based so much on the information you get back on what the fiscal analysis would cost, whether it's feasible to do, you know. I would need more, more information, you know, I, both are needed, so.
Well, and what you and I talked about, Maggie, a little bit was if the commission feels like this set of new design standards that you're working on needs pictures, we don't really have a budget to pay someone to create those pictures. So if we didn't apply for the grant for that, if we went for the fiscal analysis instead, what do we do? How do we get those pictures? Either we.
Sit here with a bunch of crayons and.
Do it ourselves, or, or, or we go look for more, a different funding source, you know, to pay for that, so. Just lots of considerations on these two little projects.
Okay, both in board, no question about that.
So you do have one more meeting before I have to submit the grant. So the grants due October 1st.
But you're meeting with?
I'll meet with the select board next week, I hope, if Renee can get me into the schedule. If she can't, then we have a problem because they don't meet again before October 1st. So I can pitch it, I can pitch both ideas to them if you want and try to get these cost estimates back and then bring this back to you on the 25th to get your formal endorsement. It's just at that point, the select board will have already probably picked one. So if you want to influence their, their selection, you, you might want to say something tonight.
I like, I like the capital asset plan, if, if the bids we get back from, you know, the, the more local firms are fit within the grant.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
Does that make sense to you, James?
If it doesn't fit, then it's true.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense to me too, I just said no to that because of the amount of money. The costs, that was the only reason.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support that.
Then it seems like, yeah, the pretty pictures might be the way.
Okay.
Way to go.
John Slayson, when we were chatting about this afternoon, said, this is really important, you know, this fiscal analysis is, it's, it's, it's a good idea and he said, I've been paying attention to some of the conversations about the wastewater upgrade and looking at a bigger picture of that and not just project by project is, is really important. So I, I sense that you all feel the same way. Okay, I'll bring that feedback with me to the select board meeting next week.
All right. Oh boy, minutes, let's get these out of the way. Minutes of August 28th. Does anyone have corrections, additions? Does anyone want to rewrite history, make themselves sound smarter than the minutes, make them look? Pretty pictures we could add to the minutes? If no one has anything, does anyone have a motion?
Motion approved, minutes eight twenty-eight.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty then. So other business and correspondence, the memo on, draft memo on stormwater?
But Alex, roll it up first, excuse me.
Happy to revise as desired.
Side suggestion. I think that letter should go to the select board. Number one.
I mean, the specific recommendation is, you know, to the DRB, as you're reviewing projects, try to, not try, but require a cumulative analysis as well.
I think it's bigger than that though. Just saying.
So are you saying rewrite this so that it's more of a, hey, select board, this is an important thing that should be done, let's go find the resources to do it, you know, not necessarily.
Whatever, to get them on board.
Not necessarily within the DRB context, or is your message to say, hey, select board, we want you to tell the DRB to do this?
No, I don't, that, I mean, I guess they can tell the DRB, I, I'm not sure exactly what their role is, but. It's bigger than the DRB and I just think that it should get the select board on board.
I mean, the DRB's already empowered to do this, right?
Well, I'm talking about taking all the, you know, what are there, five developments? That are coming down the pike?
Right, and then try to assess what their, what the cumulative impact of all of them would be, should they all be built out?
Scoping study, I don't know what the words are. Just, I don't know, I've thought a lot about it since the last meeting. And we've talked about it a lot tonight.
It could be, now that you say that, one of the other funding sources that we go for every year is through the Regional Planning Commission, their UPWP Unified Planning Work Project. And we, we usually discuss what projects we want to do with that during the budget, the fall budget cycle, so that we will have money for net, for the application for, that comes up in January. And so I, I suppose, it, it seems like it might be a valid UPWP project to, to do this sort of a stormwater analysis, specifically if we, if we tie it into all the additional transportation infrastructure that would be created by these projects and, uh, cause they have lots, the RPC has a lot of money when there's a transportation nexus. Maybe that would be a way to make it happen.
I'd just like to have the biggest bang for our buck, you know, like this is a big issue and you, you guys need to get on board.
It is townwide.
It is townwide, I mean, that's how it seems to me.
Built village area.
I know there's one development that's pressing on this right now, but it's way bigger than that. We have a lot of developments coming on board, or in the, possibly in the.
Soon as we get some water.
Right, which, who knows, I mean, that, you know, I don't know, that's just my two cents. I'm not gonna say anymore, you guys can, it's up to you guys.
You guys have concerns about doing it?
Yeah, two really, one, one was, was that because these different development projects are, get reviewed by the DRB at different phases. If, for example, one of the projects came in with a preliminary plan application where they had done all their, their stormwater engineering and they had calculations and all of that, to, to, to tell them, okay, thank you for that, now factor in these other four projects, two of which are only at the sketch plan phase of the review and have not done any calculations and don't really have a firm design yet. It, it, it'll be difficult for their engineer to estimate what, you know, all the runoff would look like. So, so that, that out of sync in terms of where, what stage each development is in could be somewhat problematic. I think my larger concern is only that our regulations right now don't specifically give the DRB any standards by which to review that information. So if, let's say they, they're, the developer said, okay, and the DRB said, we're gonna hire an independent consultant and we hired one and we made them pay for it, and our independent consultant said, actually, I think based on my estimates of these five projects, that when they all come online with this one that you're actively considering, there will be some sort of negative impact. I don't know where, I don't know that the DRB would have the authority to do anything about that. Nothing in the, in our stormwater regs anticipated a, a cumulative look like this outside of the project area. So even if they had the information and wanted to impose conditions or require a redesign, I'm not sure they would legally have the, the ability to do that. Unless we change the regs and include this sort of analysis in there. So I don't, again, I don't want to poo-poo the idea, I think it's, I think it's a good idea and, and we all have some trepidation about whether projects that meet all the state's standards are actually going to protect the waterways. They should, that's why the standards are there, but we all question that.
Didn't we run into problems years ago with up on Bittersweet Hill? Where there was one subdivision that Clint Ammons did and then down the road, he did a second one and wasn't it not until the second one that we really started to have trouble? And they weren't really, there wasn't much the DRB could do, we weren't really, they weren't really coordinated, were they?
Well, no, actually, in that case, there was something that they could do. That is, that's my recollection, recollection of the sequencing. And it was the later subdivision where stormwater infrastructure was put in and didn't work.
Correct.
And the downhill neighbors were having negative impacts. But each of those approvals, you know, had hooks into the developer that said, you have to come back and, you know, revise this if, if something goes wrong, and it did go wrong and so that got fixed. But that was a different sort of a, a different sort of a process. And, and frankly, that was one developer on one street.
Yes.
You know, this complates developer X here and developer ABC, you know, that much further away on the watershed. Still in the same watershed, but, yeah.
The thing I'm, I reacted to in what you had written was that the, the next phase of doing the engineering beyond sketch plan approval is based on the concepts shown in sketch plan. And if there are some major errors in the conceptual proposal, once all this engineering gets done based on that conceptual approach, there's issues about how you can back up from that. So you kind of have to get the concept pretty close to what's gonna work or as close as you can with your general assumptions about other projects and your project. It just seems to me that we could, we could encourage that kind of thinking when you're doing your conceptual work. That this, we can't give you a complete write-off and then just go ahead and engineer it. It might not work.
Yeah. Well, that's, there's also the potential, I don't think this is what you were saying, John, but there is the potential for a false sense of security if, you know, a, a consultant that we hire says, development X is what you want me to look at and you want me to factor in these other projects and I, I'm doing the best I can with those other projects because they're not well formulated yet, making some assumptions and, and the, and the conclusion is there'll be no, no net impact, everything looks fine. But then when those other projects come forward and do the revisions and tweaks and all the other things that maybe it wouldn't be, and I guess you just, you'd, you'd have to do that successively for each project as they went through and increase the information that you had available, but it's just awkward.
Well, the question is, who, who gets there first? You know, I'm, I'm first in line, my development doesn't have any problems with it. I got approval, I'm doing my development, that, then that affects everybody upstream in time and in physical place in the watershed. To me, it's just a matter of, of, of broader awareness at the sketch plan level that this, this has got to work. You have to spend enough time with consultants at the sketch plan level, not just you and your partner sitting in your kitchen sketching out what you'd like to build. You actually need to have some technical opinions brought into that at that level. And, and our regulations, second point, is should require that, should.
Our, our problem is that sketch plan is designed to be a flexible, open, not heavily engineered step in the process so that somebody can propose a concept and not have invested so much money in it that they're not willing to modify it based on public feedback and board input and all the rest of that. And the more we front-load these analyses at the sketch plan level, the more we, A, sort of lock in a project that, and, and remove that flexibility, but B, we, we give the developers this sense of, I've put so much into it that I should be good going forward, right? And, and the reason we have an iterative review process is to be able to react to as the project matures and, and there's more to it, you know, so. Some of the bigger projects, we have gotten sketch plans that are very detailed, like there are streets laid out and like on-street parking is sort of indicated and there's even some concept of building design. That's not really what sketch plan is meant to be, it's meant to be a sketch and then you get that detail at the preliminary phase and then at the final phase, you can tie off any loose ends.
But the history shows that once you've got sketch plan approval, it's very hard to go back and change the concepts that, that approval was based on, it's just.
Unless, unless the engineering shows that there are constraints that, and, and there are design standards that they can't abide by and then the project has to change.
Then you gotta come back and do sketch plan again, essentially.
Or your preliminary has to bend and wiggle to, you know, fit that and not break the sketch plan, but, you know, make minor modifications to it. But it, again, it's from a, from a procedural standpoint, an applicant just is, is not gonna put that much money into a sketch plan review for full-blown engineering and hydrocat analysis because they don't even know where the, where, where we want them to put the roads and, you know, how wide they're gonna be and that, all that stuff gets figured out later.
I'm not talking about that level of engineering and that level of calculation. I'm talking about something more open, more flexible, but yet responds to what will affect stormwater, for example.
Right, but I, maybe I'm taking this too much from an engineer's mindset, it's Mitch's influence. There's no way to gauge whether there will be impairment until you have the level of detailed analysis that, that shows you that, you know what I mean? So that you gotta have those details to run the analyses to say, this is how much runoff will be during the peak hour and, you know, presumed sediment flow.
I understand how that is the way to get the final solution, but I don't think that avoiding looking at what the impacts could be, could be. Not saying that we've engineered them and we know that that's gonna happen if you do it that way. It just would be a valuable thing to encourage people and to require people to spend a little bit of money.
Well, I don't wanna.
Establishing that, maybe we already have that.
Yeah, I don't want to short-change our system, especially with Mitch on board since he has that training. At the sketch plan, we, we do look at, you know, just what are you proposing for density and intensity and where are the best soils for stormwater absorption and are you paving them over? Are you saving them for some stormwater treatment? And Mitch, oftentimes, he did it in the Donovan O'Donnell project, actually, that was the subject of this letter from Kate and Mag and Bob. You know, made some comments about, I think the intensity here is enough that there may be problems with finding appropriate stormwater treatment. But, but that's very diff. But, but that's very different from, from, um, doing any kind of assessment of this project in comparison to four others. And what would the actual impact be? And would that bring us over the line to an impaired waterway? That's a much more detailed analysis than, than what you're talking about, which we do a little bit of now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with Alex on this, isn't it? Here, I mean, in my business, we'll, we'll do, we'll do a model run, you know, five, six, a dozen times. And that's, the first time is crap. You know, it's, it's some, some real, really wild assumptions on where we're gonna be. And then you get some design worked on and you feed that input in. You get some more design worked on, you feed that input in. You know, probably, you know, at round six, you're gonna start to get some reasonable data. But compared to round one, it could be an order of magnitude. And it's really not, um, it's really not the quality to, to base, you know, big decisions on.
I hear what you're saying, but I, it just seems to me that that, that approach works in your business. The engineers that you work with, that, that's part of the process. And you don't get locked in to that number-one shot, that first try.
The moral of the story is, is that the output is, is only as good as the incoming assumptions. Right, that build it up. The more, the more you know, right, the, the more accurate your, your outcome is. And, and you have to be cognizant of that when you're, when you're dealing with very early models of a situation. And, you know, the types of things that I deal with, you know, they're electrical, but they have direct corollary to fluid flow.
Yeah.
And maybe we're doing this, maybe we're doing this as much as, as we reasonably can already with, with Mitch's work and with the planning department.
You know, back to this conversation, you know, we're, we're asking the, the DRB to, to tell applicants to, to, you know, use the best data available, right? To create an analysis and, and look at it. And, you know, certainly, as data gets better, right? The end guy, unfortunately, will have the most accurate data and may, you know, may end up with the largest problem set to deal with. I don't know that I can do anything about that. From a, from a planning commission's point of view, you know, our mandate here is to really protect the water and to keep us out of MS4 territory with the state. Right, that's gotta be our, our number one.
We don't wanna be impaired.
We don't wanna be impaired.
Right.
So, back to you. And I'm, I'm presuming the correspondence that we got from Kate and her group in this memorandum that we're sending to the Development Review Board is something that the Select Board is fully aware of. They got correspondence from them.
Did it go to them too?
I'm presuming our note is going to them. If we're talking about awareness that leads to action, I'd assume that we're ringing the bell, you know? And just exactly what the DRB, I mean, it is kinda tough, as Joe infers. It's like, how do you, how do you approach the science of this? And do it when people are running at different rates of speed and?
Yep.
I, I don't know. But I think for us to respond in the way we have and alert the DRB and the Select Board, we're not the only ones. Seems, you know, appropriate.
Appropriate, as much as we can do.
We can't copy this to the Select Board.
Yeah.
Maybe they don't know, though, that five projects are rolling along and?
They're very busy.
Yeah.
They meet a lot more.
They heard some news about a sewer plant, I heard, you know?
I know. It's just, you know, we've cha, I can't say we, 'cause I wasn't on board when the zoning got changed. But it's a big thing that was done. And now, a lot of people are interested in Heinsberg. And, you know, not much has happened because of the water. And the septic, I assume, is second. But?
Here we go.
Here we go. I mean, and we're talking, maybe it's gonna be 20 years. We don't know. Like all the other things we're talking about here. It's a big issue.
On, on the small scale, um, not, if any of you've had a chance to walk downtown, especially right now, 'cause it's the bones that you can see, uh, that stretch of St. Paul Street from Maine to Maple has probably four different stormwater, uh, rain garden situations going on. They're highly structured. But it's pretty amazing to see, and they've incorporated them into the sidewalk, streetscape, landscape, where people sit, where people walk in a way that, well, we'll see, the trees are.
And is the city doing that? Is it their expense, do you think?
Clearly with a big pot of money from somewhere.
It is the city's project, yes.
I've seen a little bit on television about one of them.
I mean, we would regard this as sort of, not the stormwater piece of it. We, we'd probably say, hey, uh, where'd you get all that lipstick, you know? But it is pretty impressive, nonetheless. And it's, it's definitely worth it, I think, when we're talking about the things that we're talking about at the moment, but also about stormwater. And, um, and seeing how it manifests itself here. So it's, it's pretty good. So I'm good with a memo. I don't know whether you were asking that, or?
Uh, well, it's the question. It's your, it's meant to be your memo, I'm just giving you the language. I would write it differently. I have, like I said, I have some concerns about, um, of having, having the DRB, which is a quasi-judicial board, you know, compelling analysis that they have no standards by which to review. I like Ray's idea of, of actually telling the Select Board, this is a town responsibility, and we oughta, we oughta, we oughta be doing this, not waiting for developer A, B, or C to do it or, or to pay for it. But that's not what Kate and Meg and Bob asked for, and I respect that. And, and so I drafted what I thought you wanted, which is, tell the DRB to make sure this happens in some way, shape, or form.
And I'm not criticizing what the, what they did at all. I don't want them to think that.
You, you say you would've written it differently, Alex. What, what other solution? What, are there any other reasonable solutions that would address the development as a whole issue? Because that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think it would be, it would be, uh, telling the Select Board that we need such an analysis to happen and to request that they partner with the Planning Commission or, or the Conservation Commission to, to fund a study, to make that happen.
But, but it's the same, it's the same issue. If we don't have firm data, I mean, that energy is off the table now.
Right.
We don't have what, Maggie? I didn't understand the word.
Firm, firm data. So if that's off the table now, we know, you know, eventually, that property will be developed. We don't know when.
When it's a, when it's a planning study, um, you get to, you get to make whatever assumptions you need to make. So when Milo and McBroom did, uh, uh, broke down the village into subwatersheds and did an analysis of the existing runoff and what the runoff might look like with a maximum build-out, they made a bunch of assumptions on that front. So to have them come back in and tell them, don't do a hypothetical maximum build-out. Please do a build-out based on as much as we know about these five projects, which is better than, you know, what they did the last time around. I, I still think Joe's right, there may be a little bit of garbage in, garbage out, but it would be better than what we have right now, and it might help.
It would be like an update, Alex.
Right, and it, it might help inform the basic question of, if everybody builds to the state's standards, are we still screwed? 'Cause I think that, and I think that's the heart of the question, right? We assume that all these new developments are, will be held to the state's stormwater standards. But we're not sure that those standards are gonna protect our waterways. So could they, could they run some models and maybe give us like a best-case, average-case, worst-case scenario?
When was that Milo and McBroom report done?
Uh, they did, a couple of them, help me, Kate, was it 2010 was one? I think, yeah.
And when were the state standards redone?
Yeah, the, uh, 2017, I think, was when the new state stormwater standards came into effect. And our, our stormwater standards were 2015.
So, um, so if they were to do a new analysis, they would, that would, that would be new information for them. I, I mean, they'd be, going to the new, new state standards and?
And we could, we could focus their attention on these, uh, five development projects rather than what they did previously, which was, assume that every parcel will be developed to its maximum extent allowed under zoning. And, you know, you get some pretty bad effects when that happens.
Who paid for that before? Did the Select Board order that before?
No, it was a, it was a partnership with Lewis Creek Association. We went out and got a, yep, we went out and got a grant.
What was the cost for that?
I don't remember. I'd have to, I'd have to look back.
Would this be an update?
Right, that's what I said, an update.
So what would it cost to do this, going, to do a project like this? Um, if we were to engage a firm like Milo and McBroom? I'd have to ask them, I don't know. I could do that.
It seemed like the thing to do. Update the?
I think that makes perfect sense. I hadn't even thought of it that way.
But, sure?
No, I'm, I mean, not just about the cost. I would think at this point, a lot of these developments, you know, there's probably a reasonable gauge on just, uh, impervious surfaces and, you know.
Can't be that, that difficult. To have stormwater treatment areas?
It's just interesting because, um, with the, the, thinking about the topic of the new Water Matters, um, event, that, that might be a, sort of a, a, you know, a, a way to focus. I mean, that might be an aid to focusing Select Board energy at this.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a planning exercise. No one in municipal, in our municipal government has the job description, stormwater manager, program, you know, work in their title. So no one will, no staff member's going to do this.
Well, that's why we're talking about hiring.
Right, but what I'm, what I was getting to is that it is a bit of a planning exercise, so probably would make sense for that suggestion to come from me, with your support, you know, saying, maybe as, as part of a budget request for next year, that let's include a little money in our special projects line item for a local match towards a, a watershed grant that we've gotten in, you know, in the distant past to, to update these studies that we've done and factor in these particular developments that have, you know, at least conceptually shown their face.
But, but following through, same thing, is that you're saying that the DRB doesn't have, doesn't really have the, um, the, um, ability to, to require?
Yeah, what I'm saying is that if we, if we did it as a planning study, there's no legal, uh, bar that we have to reach to be able to, um, say something about this issue. If we put it in the DRB's hands and, and, and a study's done and it has a finding that is significant in some way, that, how, it's not actionable. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm being a little too dramatic. It may not be actionable, because we don't have a regulation that talks about it, and, and it might be, the results may be suspect.
Okay, let's look at the other side. If, if we ask the Select Board to, um, to, uh, you know, authorize this grant to have this, this study done, depending on the results of that study, then what?
So, what I would say is, I would think we would revise our stormwater regs. This is, this is my other problem with this whole conversation is, if, if, if our, um, if this is all based on us thinking that all these projects are gonna comply with the state's stormwater regs and our local regs, which are largely the same, um, with a smaller trigger, if our assumption is that when they do that, when they comply, it will still harm our waterways, then clearly, the stormwater treatment needs to be, you know, the standard needs to go up. What is that standard? We don't know what it is, and the DRB certainly doesn't. So if they got that result in, what, what could they possibly say? Except, don't develop it. You know, that, they don't, they, they're not stormwater experts. So I, I think that if we did the study as a planning study and the results came back saying, we think you're in trouble, even if you, these projects all meet the requirements for state and local stormwater, then, then we would change our stormwater regs at the local level and say, it's gotta be held to a much higher standard. And that'd be a whole other study after that, to know what that standard ought to be.
Study, and, and also, you know, just looking back, that how, how long? How long did it take us to do the, the, the stormwater regs? And then?
Right.
And then it had the petition and it had to go for a vote? And so from today to whenever that happens, how many of these projects will have been?
Permanent, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just?
So, you know, it might?
Worth starting, though.
Yeah.
Seems to me.
And it might make sense to still send something to the DRB. I feel like I'm driving you here, so I'm not entirely comfortable with this, but, uh, 'cause I want this to be yours. This correspondence from Kate and others was to you guys, not me. But, um, maybe, maybe your memo to the DRB wants to say, these cumulative impacts are important, should be considered. You know, please work with applicants to, to make sure they are considered, but not dictate that, that there has to be a formal study done each and every time a project comes forward that looks at all the other projects, but that there's some acknowledgement that those other projects exist. And if, I don't know, if, if appropriate data exists to, to try to factor it in, or something like that. I, I'd have to reword.
But we do, we need some, we need a big picture, we need a big picture look at this.
I don't, I don't think sending a, a letter to the DRB precludes you going to the Select Board and saying, you know, is it town, we should look at this? I, you know, um, if you really believe that, I think the DR, the DRB letter serves as the stopgap until that happens, right? Um, the alternative is that you get no analysis at all, right? And, and that may still be the case. It's the DRB's prerogative, but, but, um, you know, if you don't say anything, don't be surprised when no, no analysis is done.
I'd be interested in Mitch's input on, on what might be, you know, an effective message to the DRB.
I can, I can tell you that he's a stormwater engineer, so he's gonna want real data. But I can also tell you that, which I should be also telling you, if you, the best way to get the DRB to do something that you think is important is to put it in the regulations. That's their bible, that's what they go by. And it's not an ad hoc recommendation that comes out of today's planning commission that tomorrow's planning commission doesn't care about. It's a permanent part of the regs, so I know, I know he would say that.
Yeah.
I'm not saying he wouldn't think that you couldn't still make positive suggestions, but I, I know he, that's the first thing that he would say. If it's important, just change the regs and put it in there.
So, um, Kate, do you, do you have any, are, any comments on our discussion or your?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that we as conservation commissioners were like, you must go to the DRB. Like I, I think probably in the back of our minds, we figured it was sort of a bigger town issue and might end up before the Select Board at some point anyways. I'm happy to speak with Jessica at Milo and McBroom, who I'm in contact with on a frequent basis, 'cause we do a lot of work with them, and see if she has any thoughts about if this is a feasible type of analysis or if there are other things that would be more useful.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm more interested in, I, I mean, we can send memos out to Wazoo that?
But, I, you know, I'm interested in the most effective way to, to get this big picture look at, um, which, which is important. I mean, we, we, we really need to have.
Which is what we'd need if we were gonna reconstitute some of the stormwater regulations to positive effect. We'd need that information anyway.
Exactly, yeah. So I, you know, I'm, I'm considering whether, you know, approaching the Select Board would, would be more, more effective, or, or doing, doing both.
Doing both.
Other, other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I don't.
Do both.
I understand Alex's reservations, but? I understand Alex's reservations, but I, you know, I don't think, judging by his description of the DRB, that they're going to, you know, they're probably going to read it, but...
Wouldn't lead to much?
Might lead to something, but it's not so concrete that it supports viable action on their part. You know, I think Alex is probably right. They need, if it's warranted, they need better regulations to manage this issue in a coherent fashion, so. But I don't think there's any harm in sending this memo. It's not like it's legislative or something, you know?
True, but if they're just going to read it and set it aside, I mean, I...
Those trivial characters.
I like what we send to have import, you know, and...
You don't know whether it's going to have import or not.
Certainly if you say nothing, it will have no import. What's the...
But if we send something they can't really act on, will they continue to take us seriously? When we send memos about...
They have to take you seriously when you send a, or approve a regulation in a choice.
Right.
Basically, they have to act on what's written. It's black and white or white. And you can say what you want to them. That's why I'm always hesitant to direct them and to do anything because they have to follow what's written, just like what Alex said. I mean, they're directed to do that.
I mean, what's written is that they can hire a consultant at the applicant's expense. What this memo says is, hey, you know, if you're going to do that, right? Right? Please, you know, please make sure it's not looked at like this, that it's looked at like this.
Right.
You know?
But that's for one. And we're talking about five here, which is a bigger picture, I think.
Well, I mean, the DRB, you know, has to handle one project at a time.
At a time, exactly.
Right? So, I mean, it's, you know, it's putting one in context of everything else going on. That's what the memo is trying to say is, is look, you know, you have the power, right, in order to get, you know, a third party, you know, appraisal of the situation here. And when you're doing that, right, if you so choose to do that, right, it's important to not only look at, you know, this particular application, but you got to look at this particular application in context with what else we know about going on today.
I'll see. I don't know. That I don't.
Best data available. And if the DRB doesn't buy into that with this memo, they don't have to.
Correct.
Right? If you regulate it, if you put it in a zoning bylaw or get the, the Select Board to, you know, sign off on getting a consultant to update and therefore, you know, starting the first in a series of what may be, you know, creating much more stringent stormwater, you know, then there's a stronger standard for them. And by the way, they still probably have to, you know, get a consultant that's going to verify that whatever development meets that stronger, you know?
So both things can happen, really. We can look at, we can recommend that they pay attention to what we know now, what they know now as the DRB, and the rules that they have to abide by. But we can also say, we may need to change those rules for them. I see those as two separate, not incompatible with one another. We can do both things.
All right, somebody propose something before we all turn into pumpkins.
I propose we approve the memo of the DRB.
Second.
Have we seen it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed it. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Forget I said that.
We, the royal we?
I missed that one. I didn't read what was in the computer today, as you can tell.
Any more discussion?
And not address the Select Board?
That was the first motion, right?
That's a good amendment. I think we should do both.
I do too. Would that be a second, a second?
Second amendment, as amended?
Whatever, a second motion?
Right. The memo to the Select Board would be that we ought to be doing this as a town. Is that the message we want to send the Select Board, you know, beyond just the CC of this memo?
Update the... Update it. I like that.
Study to include projections.
All right, Kate, is that too much of a chocolate mess for you to be able to?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is the amendment. I don't know who made that. I can make it look pretty, but if somebody wants to state it nice and clearly for me, that would be lovely.
All right, Joe, you don't look like a pumpkin yet, so.
I am. I would say the amendment is to also communicate with the Select Board that the Planning Commission strongly recommends that the existing study for stormwater in this area be updated with the latest information we have on the five proposed projects that are, you know, possible in this area.
Okay.
Second.
So are we voting just on the amendment or can we vote on the whole?
Let's just get it over with.
Let's just...
The whole deal.
All right, let's just vote on the whole deal. We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. All righty. So that entails you have another memo to the Select Board.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
You won't see it. I'll just do it.
You rascal.
I can copy you, Maggie. I think what I'm going to do is forward them this one with a little, in the email saying, and per the minutes of this meeting, planning commission also wanted to instruct, you know, tell the Select Board the following.
That's good.
All right.
All right, people, any other business?
One question I have. It was quick. The official map. Can the Select Board just sit on that forever?
They can. Well, no, they can't.
I think they plan on...
So they had initially planned on...
What have you heard?
Yes. They initially, they talked about it once briefly. Phil indicated that he felt like this was going to require a good, solid chunk of their time. So they put it off to a future meeting, told Renee to figure that out. We had tentatively settled on next week's meeting, the 18th. And so I'm preparing to go and hear their suggestions and walk through it with them. And anyone here is welcome to come. But I did get a message from Renee today saying that it may need to get bumped because things got bumped at their last meeting and she's, you know, doing the best she can to get things scheduled. So it's a little up in the air as of this evening. I can follow up with all of you via email tomorrow or Friday and give you the real...
So then that wouldn't be till October, probably?
Right. Yeah. If it doesn't happen next week, it'd be in October.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
But that is the next step. And there is a drop dead date. The way the statute reads is that if they don't approve it within a year of your public hearing, it's declared denied. And your public hearing was in February, I think. So let's hope they don't wait that long, but...
But your budget time is coming up.
It is. It is. Yep.
All right, that's it. The meeting is closed. The shop is shut up and we're done. Thank you, everybody.